Called to order the meeting of council for Monday, December 19th at 7:00 PM. Looking for approval of our agenda.
We've approval.
That's the one that's supposed to be on.
Yeah, I know, but you still weren't working there. Now you're working. You weren't before, though.
Approval of the agenda, folks?
Move.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation, this is a chance and opportunity for the folks of you that came out this evening to address council on whatever you may have to say, so podium is there. Judy? Name and address.
Judy Knowles, 274 Belmont Road. I was just going to comment on the building at 284 Belmont Road.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I will declare a potential conflict of interest on this item and excuse myself from the discussion.
Counselor Nault?
I don't see a lot of changes to the 2017 or 2015 proposal. Looking through it, am I correct in understanding that the park is still being dedicated to the city?
Staff?
I looked through it and I didn't see any mention of it, sorry.
Yes, Your Worship, the proposed changes do not impact the entitlement to the land to be protected at the rear of the property.
Okay, super. And the other thing is, the original building called for retaining wall behind, directly behind the building of like three stories, so unless you looked at the topography, you wouldn't necessarily twig into that, but that's something you may want to look at. That's my only comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Final time? Then we shall move on. Next item on the agenda is Mayor's Message. There are a few announcements. One, a reminder that City Hall closure for the Christmas season will be inclusive of Friday, December the 23rd, going through January 2nd, and we will reopen January the 3rd. During that time, folks with dogs who have licenses that are required, CRD has gone to an online registration for those, so you can do that right up until the end of the year to get your $5 discount. And we will note on the door in that regard when the time comes that they will not be sold at City Hall in that duration. Anything else from members of council? See, none. There is a New Year's levy with the Royal Canadian Legion on January the 1st, and it runs through from noon until 2:00 PM. It is open to the public, so that can go on your schedules. The other one that I have is a bit of information to be read at this time. And I will just read it and carry on from there. "The City of Colwood has been advised by Department of National Defence that they intend to dispose of all of Royal Roads' lands. We have been advised that this disposal will not affect the university operations nor will it affect heritage buildings or Parks Canada National Historic Site. At this time, Songhe's nations and Asquamal nations have expressed an interest in these lands and discussions are ongoing. Municipalities, including ours, have no authority over federal lands. However, the City of Colwood is providing information to all parties and assisting in making informed decisions. DND decision may have a significant effect on Colwood, and it does come at an important time for Colwood as we embark on the development of a new official community plan. While we will not know for some time the outcome of the Royal Roads' lands, it is important for our community to work collaboratively and to be focusing on the areas of Colwood that we can control as we continue to enhance our community and provide a high level of life for our residents." And with that, I want to wish all the folks in the audience Merry Christmas and Happy New Year on behalf of council, and we will continue with our meeting. So, adoption of minutes, of two sets of minutes, December 5th and the public hearing minutes on December 5th as well.
So moved.
Counselor Day, notation?
Thanks. Just a quick point from the regular minutes, December 15th or December 5th, sorry, glass is not working. Just Counselor Martin declared a conflict of interest and departed from the voting portion of the meeting and then returned as Chair of the Library Board to give us some information. And I think we just need a little something in there saying that he returned as Chair of the Library Board to give a presentation, because it looks like he left the meeting and then all of a sudden he's talking again in the minutes, so just a little clarity for future generations.
Staff can take a look at that and we can correct. Thank you. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Receipt of two sets of minutes, one is the public hearing of December 5th and the other Parks Rec and Culture for June the 20th.
We've receipt, Your Worship?
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. We have a piece of correspondence here requesting contribution if we so desire to the 13th Annual Military Service Recognition Book.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to our Director of Communications. Should this be something that we refer back to you? Do you see any value in that, or should we just receive this?
Thank you, through the Chair. We do have a limited advertising budget here in the city, and we like to direct it primarily to our key audience, which is our residents, and then to other stakeholders, investors, potential homebuyers. So this would be a little bit of a stretch from that, so it would be nice to have this referred back so that we can review our budget as we go through the process and see where this falls within it.
May I make a motion? Can I make a motion to receive and then to also have this as part of the 2017 budget discussion?
Seconder?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Under item, our new business, Parks Rec and Culture, 6.1.1, recommendation in regards to proposed changes to Royal Bay Park Plan, terms of reference for the development of the park within La Toria North area. Counselor Nault, I understand you'll take this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Committee reviewed a proposal to, oops, sorry, amend the parks in the northwest portion of the Royal Bay site. The revisions, changes include revisions to the boundaries of park areas, including changes to the shape of parkland adjacent to the northern side, northern boundary of the site, the Kotlow-Dressler neighborhood, realignment of trails, an increase of parkland under the proposed 2016 park plan compared to the 2014 park plan, protection of all trees surrounding Murray's Pond, closure of the Royal Bay Drive connection, which was a walking path between the school property and La Toria, and retention of the majority of forest and areas within the north La Toria area. It was very well received by committee. The actual changes to the park's boundaries are very small. The net gain to Colwood is also very small, but there was no public comment on it. So I would move that council direct staff to include the proposed park plan in the associated bylaw to amend the OCP, application number OCP 16-001, and include the terms of reference as attached to the staff report dated December 5th, 2016, entitled Proposed Changes to the Royal Bay Park Area Plan and Terms of Reference for the Development of Parks Within the La Toria North Area in the Development Agreement to be registered as a condition of rezoning of the area of Royal Bay known as La Toria North, which is application RZ 16-003.
Thank you. Seconder?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just a question, and I will say that I think the plan has been worked on with the best interests of the existing green space, which I think is very important. And there's only one area of concern I have, which was an area where was indicated a potential emergency access location, and that wasn't finalized as yet, and this is as yet to come to the Planning and Land Use Committee and the Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee. So I'm just wondering about that emergency access. Will that be dealt with at the Transportation and Public Infrastructure, or is that now assumed to be included with this park plan?
Madam Mayor, if I could just clarify, the emergency access in question is right at the very, I guess, far north corner of the site.
Correct, correct. Close to Rockwood Terrace.
That, I believe that connection is shown in the existing area plan. I don't believe it's up for, applicant isn't proposing that it be changed at this time. If I recall, the response of the applicant at the Parks and Rec Committee meeting was that there was a lot of work to do to see whether the grades would permit vehicular emergency access. I, to be honest, question whether it could be achieved there with any financial viability. So it certainly would be something that's worked through the subdivision process associated with the lands adjacent to that area, but as of yet, I don't believe it's an issue that will come forward through planning or the transportation committees unless council chooses it to be addressed.
So if I may, just, my concern is there is a gazetted roadway-applegate, which is a laneway, I guess, at the back of the properties on Dressler, and it's always been my hope that that would become the pedestrian pathway, as it would be a desirable area to walk through. There's still a treed buffer area. And so if it is only a pedestrian access, I would certainly like to see it in an area that's enjoyable and beautiful to add to the amenities for that area, rather than be an emergency access connection that might be steep and gated, or, and I'm just not sure still what that is. I will support the recommendation. I think the parks plan is an improvement, and I'm hoping that we can do some, get some clearer understanding before any emergency access are considered.
Anyone else? Call the question. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Item 6.2, Planning and Land Use Committee, 6.2.1, Director of Planning for 517-535 and 543 La Toria Roads Regarding Street Naming Bylaw.
Thank you, Worship. Subdivision at 517 and 535 La Toria Road and 534 La Toria Road are being developed jointly. Accordingly, they have requested that the following street names would apply to both developments. First, Byzantine Way, this would be continuation of the existing Byzantine Way up in a U configuration, up back up the hill. Secondly, Ridge Point Place. Thirdly, Elevation Point Terrace. And lastly, Ridge View Terrace. A map showing the location of the proposed new streets is attached to the staff report before you tonight. Staff consider the proposed street names to be consistent with the city's street naming policy, which supports a theme when there are three or more streets being named at one time, and this theme could be based on geographical features. Staff are recommending that the bylaw receive first, second, and third readings later tonight, and that for the purpose of this bylaw, a public hearing is not required. Thank you.
Move the recommendation, Your Worship?
Seconder?
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's one of these pet pews, and I brought it up before to our Director of Planning, and I'm just wondering if we have any direction regarding it. I looked up a way. A way is a small out-of-the-way road. A place is a similar to a court or close, usually a short, skinny, dead-end road with or without a cul-de-sac, or sometimes pea-shaped. And then a terrace is a raised, flat area around a building, which is similar to a plaza. Are we, as we're building out, are we going to start conforming to what standards are with what a place, a way, all that kind of stuff, or are we, are we still sort of learning?
Your Worship, I note that in terms of Byzantine Way, that's a continuation of an existing street that has the designator of way. The other streets, the place, terrace designations were proposed by the developers, and staff did not put a lot of thought into those designators beyond the understanding that the phrase terrace and place are generally used for smaller streets and certainly not collector artierial roads.
Does staff anticipate, through you, Mayor, does staff anticipate that we will ever get to a point where we actually have definitions of what will be a road and what will be a street and so on down the road, or is that not necessary from our standpoint? And I'm not talking about road or avenue, I'm talking more about the smaller roads like ways and places and terraces.
Your Worship, while I look through the road naming policy, I don't see direction from council on the designators themselves. Staff would be certainly happy to work under guidelines or policies set by council for this. As it currently stands, I believe the only reference in the policy is to lanes be the designator for private roads and strata roads.
Yeah.
Good. Anyone else? Might be something for planning and land use to have table discussions on, policy updating. Call the question, then all those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Item 6.2.2, Counselor Nault, you are excused for your declared potential conflict of Moving forward, this is the report on 284 Belmont.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The staff report before you is in regard to revisions to the development agreement associated with the property that was authorized by council back in 2015. The application was based on a proposal to construct a four-story, 48-unit rental apartment building. The staff report from 2015 is included in the council agenda. The conditions of the development agreement included securing the building as a rental building for a period of not less than 10 years in exchange for the previous requirement that the adjacent 712-meter strata lot be transferred to the city for the construction of an affordable housing project. The applicant at that time, Seeridge Properties, decided, elected not to proceed with the application, and consequently, the recommendation in Planning and Land Use Committee was not forwarded to council. Staff have since received a proposal from a new applicant, develop the project as previously approved in 2015. Staff are requesting confirmation from council that they remain in favor of foregoing the acquisition of the adjacent strata lot in return for securing the apartment building as rental for a period of 10 years. Staff are also recommending that the conditions to be included in the development agreement be revised to delete items that are covered by other city bylaws or permit processes. This is to ensure that the development agreements are not overly cumbersome and difficult to enforce. The proposed revisions are shown in the appendix to the staff report. Thank you.
Counselor Logan?
I'll move the recommendation for discussion, Your Worship?
Second. Discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just a couple of areas of concern, not because of what I read in the report, but because of issues that have come up at other development sites within Colwood. One of the issues, we're on page, I'm on page six of eight, where it talks about the sheer blasting and the need to have a certified arborist to ensure that the trees are protected. But I'd like to know what assurances we could get, that the depth of the blast holes would be limited to prevent impacts to the neighbors. There's been a tremendous amount of impact. A lot of us have heard from neighbors affected by the blasting in the La Toria Valley. And also, the rock wall that's been put up there is quite substantial, and I'm just wondering if there's anything that would limit the size and magnitude of a wall that would be left from the sheer blasting.
Your Worship, certainly, the normal, the civil implications of damaging someone else's property through blasting would come into play here. The city issues blasting permits, but generally, there isn't oversight such that we're making sure that mistakes aren't made by the blasters. That's part of the process that blasters undertake in terms of their due diligence and making sure that their work is done properly. We haven't turned our mind to amending this development agreement to further provide assurances around blasting, so I can't speak to additional options that we've developed at this time.
Thank you. So there is no additional limitations to the height of a rock wall that's left?
We certainly haven't recommended them as part of these changes. The project that was approved at the time of the original zoning predicated itself on there being a pretty steep wall left behind to retain the natural area while leveling the site for a building. I believe there were considerations around the overall height of the development relative to where it would start on the rocks there. The retaining wall bylaw would come into play if there was a retaining wall associated with that cut, and we would deal with that through a development variance permit if the applicant so chose. I don't think that would necessarily be the case if it was simply a blasted slope.
Okay. And under the off-site works, it talks about trees down each side of the sidewalk. I think that means on either side of the driveway, but it's worded as on each side of the sidewalk, so is there trees on both sides of the sidewalk? I'm looking at off-site works number two.
Your Worship, that could be a situation where there was a boulevard between the sidewalk and the road, and then a verge between the sidewalk and the property line. I could certainly see that being a potential off-site condition. I certainly advocate frontage improvements that see sidewalks buffered by boulevards. I think that's a good configuration. So I think that's something that could be implemented, but would likely come down to integrating the frontage improvements with the onsite landscape plan.
Thank you, and I'm just trying to check if this is, oh, I see. There wasn't much discussion, I'm sorry, changing to under number two on the background, where it says the amendments included deleting the requirement to transfer 712 square meters of a strata lot to the city, and in return, a provision that would secure rental of the apartments in the building for a period of not less than 10 years, with the value of the strata lot currently being $207,000, and looking for some input from council as to whether or not we were still interested in continuing that arrangement. Did I miss that, or?
That is correct, and if I could elaborate a bit on the staff report, when the Seafly Properties brought this forward, we were in a situation where rental buildings were not a common proposal. We were struggling to get rental buildings built in Colwood. That's not the case now. We've got several projects in the approvals process that would add hundreds of apartment buildings, rental apartment buildings, to the housing stock. So because of that context changing, we felt it was important for council to have an opportunity to consider this request.
Thank you. So I guess I would just provide my input, which is that I think that we'd be much better off to retain some land with some value, because land will, in my opinion, always appreciate, and I think that would be good value for the residents. The recommendation, I guess I'm not quite sure what is on the table, maybe Gordy can remind me. Did it include the rental requirement and the giving up of the land?
Your Worship, just to clarify, the recommendation as currently stated by staff, or the recommendation from 2015?
As currently recommended.
Okay. So the current recommendation is that council simply consider this, given the changed context, and that if council is in favor, that the additional changes be made to the development agreement to basically clean up a lot of the extraneous requirements that we feel were covered by other bylaws and requirements?
So I'm sorry, I guess I'm really not clear on what the recommendation is that we're voting on, so maybe Gordy can clarify.
Are we on page five of 35 on the electronic one?
Three there.
Yeah.
So it's under three, it's three point, and then there's the second point under three.
Let me see.
Where that is on yours?
Yeah, that's trouble when we're working between paper and electronics. We have learned that it doesn't always jive accordingly, so I'm just trying to assist.
That's why I like paper.
Well, that's okay if we were all on paper, but.
So I am looking at page five of eight, but I do not see written, just for clarity, I do not see written in the recommendation, either we're keeping the land, or we're foregoing the land to get rental agreement for 10 years. I don't know which it is that's being proposed.
Yeah, and I've got that part right here.
If you go to find three.
Yeah, but, okay. Yeah, so that's.
There you go. Found it.
No, see, now it's not giving me. So on the electronic version, I'm bringing your attention to page three of 35, where under the item number three discussion, second section down says deletion of items to be included in development agreement. Staff are recommending that the conditions be included in the development agreement as recommended by the Planning and Land Use Committee at their meeting of April the 7th, 2015, be revised to delete items that are covered by other city bylaws or permits. In the opinion of staff, it would be redundant to include these items in a development agreement. The recommended revisions to the recommendations of the planning and land use are shown in Appendix A, or Appendix Two. And then it lists those off. The recommendation that's on the floor before us is then on that same, in that same section, under. under item number four, options, and then five, recommendation, that the following recommendation is offered for consideration, that staff be directed to prepare a registrable development agreement for the property at 284 Belmont Road, that council off, two, that council authorize the mayor and chief administrative officer to execute same against the subject parcel, which contains the following. And then there's quite a list of lists, and that's where you read from on sheer blasting and off-site works and those bits of detail.
Correct. But there's nowhere in there what's to happen with the land. So in my humble opinions, that council has not directed staff as to whether we are retaining the provision of 10 years of rentals for this location at the cost of the land valued at $207,000, or if we wish to retain the land that's valued at $207,000, where we have many projects coming forward that will have rental accommodation.
Staff?
Your worship, I believe, certainly it could have been written a little clearer, but if you look at the appendix on page 55 of 123...
Yeah, you can't use paper, you can't use paper numbers to us on here. It was hard enough trying to find them.
Well, let's just say this. My understanding is if council endorsed the recommendation as currently stated, it would cause staff to prepare a development agreement that would take that requirement for the off-site parcel out of the deal. If you look at the discussion section about under item three discussion, deletion of the items to be included in the development agreement, that is a section that we're discussing, the deletion of that entitlement to take that amenity parcel. And it references the changes, they're explicitly stated through, strike through, in Appendix Two. So certainly, if council wants to give us a very direct resolution about that specific item, that's probably a good way to go. But if council endorsed the recommendation under section five, we would take that as direction that the applicant's request has been endorsed with the additional changes covering off this, cleaning up the development agreement.
Counselor Day, any clearer?
Sure. I guess I'm, I'm starting with how to do that, because I can't make a motion now, because there's a motion on the table. I guess I could, yeah, I don't know what to do. The recommendation on the table is not very clear from my perspective, because it's assuming things. And I would prefer to see them written out as to what we're doing. And I feel quite strongly that I do not want to see another sheer wall created in Callwood, because it has long-term issues in terms of safety, liability, pleasantness for looking at. And so my inclination at this point is to not support the recommendation coming forward based on that this is not the same proposal that was proposed before. It is no longer affordable housing.
Worship.
Yep.
Just to clarify, if council chose not to take action or to deny the request to change the development agreement, the existing comprehensive development zone would be retained on the property. As I understand it, that zone would allow for construction of a four-story condo building or apartment building with the blasting as originally proposed under that zone. So this, as we understand it, doesn't have bearing on that issue, because it wasn't included in the ask from the applicant or what was recommended from staff. So if that was going to be an item to be brought into the discussion, it would have to be actually brought in by council, and then direct, staff, staff would have to take direction to include that in a new condition of the development agreement.
Appendix Two is found on page 30 of 35, if that is of any assistance to you. Not for your paper. Get on board.
No, I mean, the two should coincide.
I guess I'm feeling this is taking an awful long time at the council table, so I'm wondering if council would indulge me in referring this back to staff? And I would so move specifically to? To address the issues that I've just brought up, and including the application of our retaining wall bylaw.
Seconder? I'm not hearing anything. It's on the table? We've got, so with...
Just a point of clarification, I still do not feel that I know what the recommendation is. So...
So going back to page five?
Your worship, I could simply state a recommendation from staff, two parts. One, for council to let staff know whether the proposed removal of the 700 and change square meter lot that was to be given to the city for affordable housing be removed and replaced with a 10-year restriction such that the building will be rented for 10 years? That's one question. Does council want to see that arrangement changed? Secondly, does council agree with the changes to the development agreement in other areas that are outlined in the different paragraphs under section five recommendation, and that which is shown in detail in Appendix Two?
Yeah, that's what I had set up on there, so... Any further questions to staff? Counselor Day?
So I'm still waiting to hear from council. Are we giving up $207,000 worth of land in order to get rental spaces for 10 years?
Nobody else have any ques, anything on there? I will look then, based on the recommendation that is before us, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Return to council, no? Moving forward to finance and administration, item 6.3.1, report Corporate Communications Manager, in regards to eats and beats at the beach that we had, and looking forward to 2017.
Thank you, your worship. This report just seeks direction on planning the 2017 eats and beats, assuming we're going to go ahead with it again. As you know, it was a very successful event these past two years. The first year, we introduced it with very little promotion or advance notice, and over 700 people showed up on the beach, surprising us. This past year, we had close to 2,000 people, we estimate, and really wonderful feedback. It's a great way to showcase our waterfront, as we know. And it's also important to note that OCP feedback, the early findings, we're hearing a lot of support for more celebrations and activities on our waterfront to celebrate that unique asset. So just to give you a sense of the significant interest and the magnitude of this event, I just wanted to share that one measure is our Facebook feedback, where for this year's Eats and Beats event, 5,900 people clicked the interested button on this event, and 30,000 people viewed this page. So it speaks to the interest in the region of having events at our waterfront. That translates to 6, 263,000 people viewed this information, that the city of Callwood is having an event. It's a significant number of people. So many of you were also at the Callwood Seaside Festival, another fantastic event. You saw the success of that event. So just for comparison, I mean, they're both fantastic events, but you experienced that wonderful event. And that one had about 700, 677 people clicked interested on that event. So it's, this Eats and Beats event has such potential to just raise the profile of Callwood. So in terms of improvements, the event has been basically managed by the communications manager, and it's got a lot of working parts. It's, it takes a significant amount of time. So what this report asks for direction on is whether we should look at engaging an event management company to help us with this, so that the communications manager can focus on communication tasks for the city, and also to take this event to the next level, potentially. So we've had a lot of activities at the current events, so three bands, 12 food trucks, kite flying, face painters, balloon people, kayaking, free kayak rides, a lot of things. With the help of an event management company, we could look at other things, potentially a Ferris wheel, some sort of transportation potentially across the lagoon to Hatley Castle. Trips this year may be over to Fizgard Lighthouse, because the admission will be free this year with the Canada 150 events. So that's what this is about. It's about asking whether we want to look at taking this event to the next level. Financial considerations, we would need to up the budget somewhat to do this. We would also likely increase our sponsorships. So last year, we had about $3,500 in sponsorships. With the help of an event management company and additional activities and lots more going on, we would also likely up the amount of sponsorships we would get. So I put before you the recommendation that council directs staff to explore the feasibility of engaging an event management partner for eats and beats and other city events in 2017, and provide an update to council on those options once explored.
We need a mover and a shaker, please.
Second?
Discussion? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. My, I'm hugely supportive of this. I'm also hugely supportive of us increasing the budget, because I think as this event grows, obviously, there will be some additional costs, but hopefully, we'll be able to recover some of that. My biggest concern is wanting to keep control of the event, that it is a Callwood event versus outsourcing it, and then having it morph into something else. And I've seen that happen. I've seen that happen. I can give an example. At my summer house, we have a square dance every year. So we have all the neighbors over, and we do the square dance. And then North Sanage came in and said, hey, we would love to be supportive of you guys, because it's a great community event. And then they took it over, and it's like not a community event at all anymore, and it's a way to sell jams and stuff. So it, which is great, but it's not what the whole event was, and that's my concern of us losing this control over this. And I would prefer, personally, I would, versus having an event manager partner, I would prefer to have challenge grant students or federal, have the federal government and have us hire three or four students working under our director of communications and getting the work done, versus having somebody outside working it. So that'd just be mine. So I will support the motion, but when it comes right down to it, it probably, I would not be supportive of an actual contracting out of an event manager to run the program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, both this event and the Beach Food Fridays and Saturdays were incredible successes this year. Fantastic public support for them. I support them both, because the public does. However, I would like to ask that when we do them next summer, that staff refer the locations for porta-potties and walking paths and where the picnic tables are placed to Elsie. Elsie has done a beach dune restoration project in this area. This year, the place we picked for our picnic table was right on one of their study areas. So it's totally destroyed as a research piece by our activities. They're not asking for very much, and I think it would be, prove us to try to maintain those beach study areas, because they are designed to help us discover how the beach can be saved from erosion, and that is a very serious problem. So having said that, I would like to make the recommendation that these events be forwarded to Elsie for comment when picking sites. And I don't think Elsie was very worried about the impact on the bird sanctuary as they are in midsummer, and that's when the sanctuary is of the least use to the birds. I am, however, concerned about the idea of running boats across the lagoon. The Canadian Wildlife Federation did a study on how much boats disturb the birds, and they were about 200 times as bad as pedestrians. This is when we were having the skulls racing up and down the lagoon. So I would definitely not support that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Second item, again, on beach food Fridays and Saturdays, 6.3.2, report. Sandra?
Thank you. So again, seeking direction on planning for this event this year. Just a little bit of the background, we did do a survey about this event, just to get feedback from people. Very positive results. 93% of people agree that this is a good event to be having. We asked a little bit about activities, having food, 100% agreed. Significant number of people wanted to see musical entertainment again, and then it decreases in terms of having beer and wine samples and having beer gardens. There was, you know, some discussion about food choices, that we could have better food choices, and cost. And then the location, as Counselor Naught was referring to. People found it was easy to find. What most people talked about was transportation issues and conflicts with pedestrians and cars in the location that we chose. So those were just some of the basic feedback we got from that survey. So when we talk about improvements to consider this year, in terms of location, some of the benefits of the current location are that it is close enough to homes that a lot of people can walk to it. And if we were to move it along the lagoon further away, that would remove that ability to some degree. If people are coming from the top of, you know, up near Machosen Road, right now, it's kind of reasonable to get there. If we were to move it along, it would make it less reasonable. Before we stop at Laguna and Ocean Boulevard, does, there's a lot of car activity there, but at least people are slowing down there. If we were, again, if we were down the lagoon, and people are cruising by, and we've got pedestrians now walking back and forth across to check the lagoon and to come to the beach food, there's, there are pros and cons with that as well. Also, in that area where we have it now, excuse me, we have the accessibility to the washroom, and we have some accessible parking spaces and the accessible seating area that's there. So that's another benefit to that location. Also, just describing the location, Ocean Boulevard and Laguna is a descriptive area along the lagoon, whereas we don't have many landmarks there to tell people where it is. Drawbacks are that there is a lack of designated walkways in the area. The parking area is narrower than some of the other areas, and it's close to home. So some homeowners might not like it.
So, some homeowners might not like it. Excuse me. So, and then the other issue, of course, is what council or not just raised with the environmental considerations. What had been talked about last year was that some areas of the lagoon be dedicated to recreational use. And that's kind of what we're hearing in the OCP process a little bit, too, is that there are areas that need to be studied and areas that need to be preserved, but we also have to make space for people to enjoy. So, those are the things we need to balance as we consider the location. Also, we have a staff, our council recommendation from June 27, 2016, that supports that council directs staff to expand the program. And I'll just cut to the chase. Explore options for designating a footpath on the beach side of the parking area between the washrooms and the event site. So, that was another suggestion that was made to improve walkability, to get people off the road, is bring them up in front of the cars. So, that's another part of this recommendation. And the last piece is really just about being able to put out a call for expressions of interest early in the new year, so that we do get a greater food choice, so that we do get lots of interest from musicians and we can plan that and schedule in advance and be prepared, so that it takes less time to schedule as we get close to it. So, the recommendation is that council directs staff to issue a request for expressions of interest to begin the selection and scheduling process for professional licensed food vendors and local musicians for Beach Food Fridays at the Callwood waterfront during May, June, July, and August of 2017, using the existing permit and regulatory, post, regulatory process, and to provide an interim update on the project to council prior to June 2017. And that council directs staff to improve walking access to and throughout the event area. I just wanted to mention one more thing, sorry. The Royal Bay Beach Park is also exploring options for food trucks and we would work cooperatively with them.
Before I ask for someone to make the recommendation, you say beach food Fridays. We're talking about Friday, Saturday?
Yes.
So, keep that in mind with whoever is moving forward to make the recommendation. Councilor Day?
Thanks. I am happy to move the recommendation and I just wanted to add just a little bit more information just from a well-rounded perspective. The user-friendly trail guide has a destination at Esquimalt Lagoon, the accessible art space. And we, through IACTI, have been working with the Accessible Transit Advisory Committee to advocate for an improved bus stop adjacent to the washroom building. And so, that is also in the works. So, when I was on site with BC Transit and members of IACTI, I noticed that we have actually some great wheelchair-accessible area to go around the far side of the washroom as well. And it might be something that we could even with chalk, mark on the ground, you know, little footprints or some other way to give people the idea, walk this way and cordon off some additional area where we could get, you know, some better access for people and less conflict with traffic. Also, from IACTI files, there is, has been for a long time, a great desire to be able to create some sort of accessible way of getting down to the beach, which has been, seemed really, really hard to do. But the grid, there's a plastic grid that was placed in the ground to hold the sand and to allow all the plants to still grow and the water to still filter at the accessible art space. And that might really help to solidify some of the sandy areas so that a wheelchair would be still able to roll down. And it would be very, very special for people with disabilities to be able to get actually to the water's edge or close to the water's edge.
So, moving the recommendation, adding Saturdays in there? Secondor? Councilor Trace? Comments, questions? Both Councilor Nolt and then Councilor Martin?
Yes, I agree with most of the recommendation. The part I'm having trouble with is that, that final sentence, that council directs staff to improve walking access to and throughout the area. That isn't in the budget right now. There's no indication of how much that's going to cost. There's no indication of exactly how that's going to be done. So, I would propose a friendly amendment to, that council direct staff to investigate improving walking access to and throughout the entire area and bring the recommendation to finance for the 2017 budget.
Secondor for the amendment?
Second.
Call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Question on the main motion? You're going to add some more?
So, thank you. A couple of things I just wanted to bring up very quickly. One, I'm supportive of the event from a standpoint of also that it's, it's a natural traffic calming situation down there. So, I mean, we're always dealing with speeders and that it's a wonderful way to slow down because it actually funnels and it forces people to slow down. So, I'm actually, especially in the summertime. I'd also just like to bring attention to staff, that they should also be in contacting discussions with Rock the Shores because Rock the Shores last year did the, the one event and so that we make sure that we were coordinating with them. It's not, not the Rock the Shores event, but the, what do they call it?
Tour de shores.
Tour de shores. Thank you. The, the event beforehand. I went down there. I probably ate almost every week down there because my wife was out at the summer house. So, I, I actually saw the problems that were down there. And so, one of the biggest issues that I'm, and I don't know how we address this and I don't feel comfortable with the wording of the recommendation where it says existing permit and regulation process because I think one of the things that we should build in to our permitting is that there should be a financial penalty if you don't show up. And then if you don't show up more than once, then you're just out of the list for the following year, that you just don't get to come back. So, I don't know how we're addressing those. Also, about me, and I don't know how you do this because it's their business and they don't want to be successful, then that's their issue, I guess. But I can't tell you how many times I was down there and they ran out of food. People were like, "Oh, no, we're out. We're done for the day." It's like, it's four. What are you talking about? The other thing is, is other complaints that I heard was, and we, we addressed it by extending the period to 7:00 p.m., but why do we do Friday, Saturday versus Saturday, Sunday? Like, it would seem to make more sense to me that there is an opportunity for business to occur throughout the entire day if it's on a Sunday versus having them show up on a Friday when everybody's working and nobody's gonna... But I, I'm just curious. And maybe there was a logical reason why we chose Friday, Saturday versus Saturday, Sunday.
So, I'll deal with your first, question first, and that was about discouraging avoidable absences. And we actually addressed that in the report. I, I was trying to kind of skim through it. We may wish to consider adding, adding a cancellation fee or something. Sorry, I'm really struggling. So, I don't know if we want to add that to the recommendation or how we deal with that piece, a piece about reviewing the regulatory process. Because I think that is important, that we discourage that. There are times, I mean, that one guy's truck, the clutch broke and he just couldn't get down the hill. But if they're just itching on us, that we, we don't want that, so. Your second question was why Fridays? We started on Fridays because staff were on duty on Fridays. When we were just making a pilot process of this, we thought that would be a good day to try, so we'd be around. We certainly would be open to running it Saturdays and Sundays and it's something we could explore with the Royal Bay Beach Park folks as well if we were, if they were doing it, so that people had options about where they were attending this. So, we're open. The Friday afternoon, though, the Friday lunchtime, a lot of people do go on their work lunch down to the beach and they take their Tim Hortons or they take their McDonald's. And so, this provides a, you know, a local option, but...
Thank you. Through the mayor, I was just going to suggest if we're concerned about the permit and regulatory process that we use, not capturing a change that we might like to have, we can just remove the word existing from the recommendation. So, our permits and processes are constantly being reviewed and updated and changed. And so, it would capture whatever was in place at the time.
So, amendment to remove the word existing? Secondor? Any conversation, question? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Amended? Then, back to the main motion? Are we ready for that one yet? Call the question on the main motion as twice amended? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Sandra, thank you. It was, I know, a lot of work there and for something that started off to be kind of an exploratory, get your feet wet, learn how this works, you know, and how it affects our local area. It was a resounding success, I believe. And yes, if we want to, I mean, we doubled it in the first year. So, there you go. Final item under that section is 6.3.3, Report Regarding New Callwood Officers' Bylaw, Number 1658.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As council's aware, we had some discussion on the proposed new officers' bylaw at the in-camera meeting earlier this evening. The reason it was held in camera is there were some discussions and considerations that had to do with employees of the city. And the community charter allows council to have those discussions in camera because it's about identifiable individuals. So, through that discussion, it was determined that there's still some more information that council needs to ensure that making the change to the officers' bylaw to better align with the community charter doesn't have any kind of negative impact or consequence on the current employees who are captured under the current officers' bylaw. So, it was suggested at that time that this item and the following bylaw, when we get to the bylaw section, or I'm sorry, the related bylaw, 1658, both be deferred.
Looking for deferral on this one, council?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? We will move then into bylaws. And the first one on the table before us, and thank you very much for your patient awaiting, bylaw number 1657, third reading for Callwood Land Use, bylaw number 151, 1989, amendment number 151 for 333 Whale Road.
Move third reading, your worship? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving on to 7.2, bylaw number 1655, third reading only. Thank you for staying so long.
We should have dragged that out longer.
Oh, yeah, right. Bylaw number 1655, third reading only. Callwood Land Use, bylaw number 151, 1989, amendment number 156. Bylaw number 1655, 2016.
Move third reading.
Madam, your worship?
Sir.
Jump right in there, staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As was stated at the public hearing earlier tonight, it has come to the attention of staff that a provision to limit the percentage of homes in Area Four of the CD22 Zone that are permitted to be detached as per council's resolution of September 12, 2016, is not reflected in the bylaws currently written. Therefore, staff recommend that the bylaw be amended, as shown in the highlighted copy of the bylaw that was just handed out to council, by including a maximum percentage of units in Area Four that may be detached while units. Staff's recommendation is to amend the bylaw and give an amended third reading as put forward tonight. Thank you.
So, we're, we're amending it now and then doing third?
Would be if, if council so chooses to amend the bylaw, an amended third reading.
amended third reading. Okay, so we can still complete on this. Councilor Day?
Sorry, just, just a point of order and I may be completely wrong, but I understood that bylaws had to be amended at second reading? So...
So, the process that we have for our bylaws is that our bylaws receive first and second readings at the original time of presentation to council. Excuse me, now I'm losing my voice. Sorry. And then we have our public hearing. That allows council to take into consideration any of the comment that you hear from the public or anything you may hear from developers or whomever. And then at that time, if there's any change that council would like to see to the bylaw as it's been presented, council would pass a motion to amend. So, your motion, for example, would be to amend the bylaw to include in Section 1A the additional wording of which no more than 50% shall consist of detached units. If that's carried and adopted by council, you would then do or consider a third reading as amended.
Excellent.
Then I would move the amendment as highlighted.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move third reading as amended, your worship? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? We're good on that one? 7.3, bylaw number 1659, first, second, and third readings for Callwood Highway Naming Bylaw, Number 1659, that includes 517, 535, and 543, Latoria Road.
Move introduction.
Ridges and places. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second?
Any discussion? All those in, uh, Councilor Day?
Sorry, perhaps now is not the time, but just, I'm looking forward to here, having staff look at what, what the designator should be for different styles of roads because it does seem to me that we're a little bit all over the place on those.
At least we didn't change the name on it. Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move third?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving on, 7.4, bylaw number 1594, for final reading, Noise Control, bylaw number 1594, 2016. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Final reading again for the MTI Information Bylaw, Number 1314, 2010, Amendment Number Seven.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. First, we would like to have a motion from council approving the fines that are contained in the bylaw, followed by final reading of the bylaw.
So moved.
Okay, I see. We have a one and a two. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And then final reading?
Move final. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And Number 7.6 is the one we're asking again for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Motion to go in camera?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?